Thank you very much and a good afternoon again. This forum, as I said, is featuring Dare County Board of Education candidates, and we're very happy they are here, and we're happy that you're here. If you have a question, please write it down on the card and have it picked and have it delivered to our screeners. We'd appreciate that. The League is a nonprofit political organization which encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League maintains a nonpartisan policy. It neither endorses nor opposes any political party or candidate. My name is Lynn Logan. I live on unincorporated Dare. The League participates, and I will be your moderator, excuse me. The League participates in a positive campaign project and has required that each of the candidates take the Code of Campaign Ethics pledge. We prohibit campaigning and/or campaigning literature in the forum room. All cell phones and electronic devices should be turned off now, and texting is prohibited. The League members assisting in today's forum are, for greeters, we have Marion Midget and Susan Merrill. On the screening board, we have Glenda Keel, Marty Hammond, Audrey Esposito, and Nancy Andrade. Our timer today is Carol Kimmel. The candidates, our contenders today are from District One, Mr. Frank Hester. He's a Republican, and he's running unopposed. District Two is Joe Tauber, Republican, and Jen Alexander, Democrat. District Three, Margaret Lawler. She's a Democrat, and she's running unopposed. In this format, each candidate will have three minutes of an introductory statement, and the timekeeper will take that time. Once they're getting close to the end, the timekeeper will hold up a sign indicating that, and if it goes too far over the time allotted, she will stand. And as I said before, we don't know what happens next. I never got the page on that one. And the next candidates, next, the candidates will respond to questions from the audience, and the voters are asked to submit written questions, and the town of residence would be on there. League members will review the questions for subject matter clarity, relevance, to avoid repetition. We believe this procedure will afford the greatest variety of subjects to be covered in our allotted time. Questioners will be asked to step up to the podium and read their questions as written without further comment. The questioner will be seated, and then the moderator will continue to preside. The League advocates positive campaigning practices, and we reserve the right to omit any question that is viewed as a personal attack or unrelated to campaign issues. Questions can be addressed to a specific candidate or all the candidates. Two minutes are allowed, and the same procedure with that timer is indicated. Opportunities will not be extended to those who have initially passed a question. Finally, each candidate is entitled to a two-minute closing statement. So let us start with our questioning now. I will be calling two names. One of the questions, the first one will come to the podium, the second will sit in the waiting chair.
Ma'am, are we going to have introduction?
Oh, did I? Yes. Got so excited. Yes, you will be after. Let me, let me announce these, these two. Ms. Healy will have the first one, and Joan Liston will have the second one. Okay? So I'll leave it right here. Okay, in the order from which that they have, they have chosen the numbers that they, at random and to begin with, we have Jen Alexander. First opening statement. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here this afternoon, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and also encouraging informed involvement in government. My name is Jen Alexander. I'm running for the District Two seat on the Dare County Board of Education. That seat would represent Collington, Nags Head, and Killable Hills. However, I would work hard on behalf of all Dare County. My husband of 16 years and I have two children who are Dare County school students. We've lived in Collington 15 years. I attended public schools my whole life and worked with the schools as a mental health consultant, as a graduate teaching assistant, and other capacities. I earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from Virginia Tech and a Master of Social Work degree from Radford University. I'm licensed by North Carolina as a clinical social worker, although most people would understand my profession to be a mental health counselor. I have served the past five years on the Executive Committee of my children's parent-teacher organization. As a part of the PTO, I have volunteered serving students, parents, guardians, educators, and administrators through fundraising for needed supplies, programs, and resources. Last year, we raised $40,000 in one single fundraising event. I have also served our community's children and families for the past 15 years as a mental health counselor. I'm the most qualified candidate, I believe, because I have worked with Dare County children and families for 15 years, and I have a vested interest in our schools because I have two students in them. My professional and volunteer experience has given me insight into the challenges and the many strengths of our community. The skills that I've developed in my profession help me to appreciate and work with various perspectives. I will consider all points of view while remaining focused on the best interests of our schools. I will advocate on behalf of all Dare County schools, both, and I also will support and work towards more programs that support students who are both college-bound and those who are work-bound. I also support the expansion of the career and technical education programs, as well as expanding the partnerships that we have with College of the Albemarle and our local businesses. I will listen to learn what Dare County citizens want for our schools. School safety is a top priority. Keeping children safe requires being proactive. I will use transparency through my communication about Board of Education policies. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself, and I look forward to your questions.
Yes, thank you very much. Next is, yes, Mr. Tauber.
Hello, everybody. My name is Joe Tauber, and I'm the District Two representative for the Dare County Board of Education. I'd like to thank the Women League of Voters for hosting this event. I'm also serving on the Janettes Peer Advisory Council. If I knew we were going to have this event, I'd have them turn the heat up, I think. So we'll have to work at that on the next meeting. I look into this crowd, and I see what's represented in our community and what makes this community a very vibrant, strong community, and how everybody is working together for a common goal. And as it relates to the school board, it's how we're working together to make the school board very effective and meaningful to our children. And I wake up every morning wondering what I can do to help the children, the staff, the central office, in making this a better school system. Talking to, notwithstanding the fact that I represent District Two, I go into every school in this district, and I, I talk to the people, the staff, the principals, the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers, and find out what the issues are and how I can help. And that's why I'm here. I'm here to help make the school system better and come up with solutions to making the school system better. This community can also help the school system be better as well. And the goal here, as, as I see it, is to make the Dare County schools not only the best in the state of North Carolina, but the best in the nation. And I think we're, we're on the path. We just hired a superintendent. He's been in for a year, and I think we hired him because of his vision, and we all had the same vision, and, and we seem to all be on the same team. And then, in addition to that, he's populated his central office with like-minded people in terms of their vision. And, and that vision expands not only, or extends not only to academic side of the house, but the vocational training side of the house. I've been a big proponent of vocational training, electrical, plumbers, HVAC, welding, whatever the passion of the child is. And I think that's sometimes what we let slide through the gap is, is not understanding the child's passion. And if we do find what the child's passion is, we can keep that, that child focused in, in understanding what they can contribute to society. And so I'd like to say that in addition to serving on, oh, 30 seconds left. I serve on the Dare Education Foundation. I'm the fundraising chairperson for that. And that's also working with the school system in terms of what the needs are, the school system, to fund that. I also serve on the ABC Board, and just recently, we funded a sold-out program which goes into the sixth graders and the ninth graders and tells them about decision-making process and how to make the right decisions, and I'm very favorable towards that. On the school board, I currently sit on the CIP Committee and also the Facilities Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lawler.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Sorry. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We have quite a big crowd here today. I don't think I've seen this many people. And I really want to thank the League of Women. I know you work very hard having this forum where you have three different sets of candidates. Thank you so much. My name is Margaret Lawler, and I represent District Three, which is Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores, and Duck, and everybody else in the county. I don't just stay with them. It has been my honor to be on the Board of Education for the past 12 years. I am currently the Vice Chairman of the Board. It's also a privilege to help the students and teachers of Dare County. I have lived on the Outer Banks for 31 years and have three children who have graduated from the Dare County school system. This system gave them a very, very strong foundation for when they went to college. While they were in school, I was on the PTA at four different schools, a classroom volunteer, and then I substituted for, was a substitute teacher for seven years, which I really, really liked, and I had to stop once I got on the board. So I have a lot of friends who are teachers, and this experience gave me the inside workings of a school, what goes on and how the day is spent. So I think because of that, that gives me a unique experience to serve on the Board of Education, understanding how schools work. I am committed to every student's education. Students all come in different levels, and I will do my part to make sure we hear, we, sorry, I've got my glasses on, that we reach all of them. My hope is that our students all have a positive school experience, and this starts in first grade, because if it's not good in first and second and third grade, then that can really determine how you feel the rest of your school years. I'm very proud of our school system because we rank as one of the top 10 in the state of North Carolina, and that is due to our excellent teachers, staff, administrative team, as well as our extremely strong community. The support we get from the community is like no other school system that I've ever known. So again, thank you for coming, and I am unopposed, but I would like you to know I'm, I'm here, I'm willing to talk. Please share your thoughts, your interests, or any questions that you have. Thank you.
Mr. Hester.
Thank you. Every time I hear this Mr. Hester, I start looking for my dad, who's turning 93 this year. And one little thing about the cold, I was told that in colder weather, it helps to slow down the aging process. So there is some advantages to this. My name is Frank Hester. I'm born and raised here on the Outer Banks, and I'm a bit reflective sitting here because my family with my granddaughter makes seven generations. It's not just the generations of being here, but along the way, they've all, my family has been very helpful in the community, helping, doing, serving. And the reason I'm here is because I was asked by some people, this isn't my natural thing to do, but the way I grew up and the way of the locals is that if there's a need to be filled, someone steps in to fill that. I'm honored to be here. Thank you for the, the League of Women Voters for putting this together. I am excited about the opportunity to serve. I think some of the values that I bring to the table, or will bring to the table, is that I'm a product of the system. It had served me well. I actually retired from the Coast Guard, 20 years there. After I retired from the Coast Guard, I got my degree in business management, worked for the Coast Guard as a civilian. And then things at home took bad for my mom. I came back home to help her. And while I was back home helping her, I was involved with the, the home health and hospice with, here in Dare County, I'm also on the Health, Dare Health and Social Services Board. And I'm honored to be able to bring the skills that I've gained from the Coast Guard and my family. And the other thing that's unique for me, I think is unique, is that I actually see teachers now that were classmates of mine, and it's amazing how this island has reached out and, and can help people grow further by making it small. There's a lot of people that have moved into the island, but they still put the kids first. After receiving my degree, which is important, I also am a product of hard work, working with my hands, and I also know that education is vitally important. And I also know that some people from the islands won't leave the island because it is such a unique place. So I'm hoping that we can all make all the kids, give them the opportunity to be successful, whether they decide to go to college or stay here and pick up a trade. And I'm hoping to use my skills of listening, watching, and to be able to not lose our local flair, because this is a special place with special folks. Thank you.
Thank you all. What we're going to do after the first questioner comes up, I have already pre-arranged the different order in which they'll answer questions, so no one answers the first question all the time or the last question all the time. And then I will call another name, and they will come and sit up here so we can get as many questions as we can. Okay.
Yes, my name is Nellie Healy, and the question is this: How does having to work two jobs at a minimum wage affect families and children at school?
Thank you. Mr. Hester, you have the first one.
Well, I think it affects parents a lot, whether it's minimum wage or if you're making good salary. Whenever the, the people have to spend additional time working and not being able to be there with their kids more, because I do see a lot with a lot of my friends, they're so busy working, that they don't have a lot of time to spend with their kids. I think it's, it's a sad place that, that, that situation occurs, but I do believe that through community, we can overcome those things.
Thank you. Mr. Tauber.
One of the things, as I raised three daughters, and one of the things that I most enjoyed in raising my three daughters was reading to my children at night. And that time away, I couldn't imagine not to be able to read to my children. And I know it's very difficult for people that have two jobs to also put that commitment towards their children, and sometimes, I mean, the community or the school system is a substitute for that. It just, it has to step in. We have to do something to provide that ability to children, for children to be able to read. I mean, it's one of the most important functions of education is the ability to read. And if it can't be done by a parent because of the economic issues, then people have to step up. I do step up. I'm, I'm sorry. Did I hear something? I thought I heard something.
Go ahead.
But anyway, it's, it's just that I mentor children. I go into the school once a week. I mentor five or six children that are having issues like that, where the parents are, may not be in the household, and I try to take them away from that, that, that world they're having, that world of trouble that they're having. And I, I'm trying to think if it's more important to them or it's more important to me to have that, to share that time with them and help those children understand the value of an education and what their abilities are in life.
Thank you very much. Ms. Alexander.
The question was, what's the potential or the impact of having a parent working two, or both parents working two, minimum wage jobs on children and their education? You know, my mom worked two jobs, weren't minimum wage jobs, so that created an entirely different scenario than what you're talking about. So I'm thinking of it in terms of the kids I've worked with in our community. I've worked with many children whose parents work more than one job, and many of them who are receiving low-paying jobs. There are some benefits. I'll point that out first. First, you know, what I saw, having a parent working two jobs and struggling, was the will to overcome, the will to work hard, the will to try to do everything that you can to provide for your family. That being said, there's a lot of potential negatives and things that I've seen. First is the availability of the parent to help with things like homework. You know, my two children, I mean, we spend easily an hour per child on homework a night, and they need that guidance, and they need that availability, the supervision. Research shows that the most shenanigans occurs between the hours of 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM in school-age, at school, school-age children. So you think about the availability of parents. I'm grateful that we have the after-school enrichment programs, which is helpful to address some of those things, but ultimately, you have reduced availability of parents to children, and you have children who aren't maybe getting the supervision that they need. That being said, I can't fault a parent for working two jobs trying to make it. People are doing the best that they can. 30 seconds. People are doing the best that they can, but I think it's important to look at kind of the bigger picture issues that are causing that scenario to happen in the first place. And unfortunately, that's not something I could address on the Board of Education, but I do support the programs like the after-school program that help fill in some of those gaps. We also have some great community programs. The Monday Night Alive program is another that is a community mentoring and, and support program for children in school. I could go on more, but thank you. I thought it was a really insightful question and deserves a lot more attention and thought.
Thank you. Ms. Lawler.
A lot of good points have been made, and one point is that it's, this is a very hard place to live because of the cost of living, and parents really do the best that they can do. I worked with one child, or three kids, but only one job, so I cannot imagine trying to balance your time. I would think organization, but to try and do that and have two jobs and three kids and a spouse that's also working, and you just, we do have the resources at the school with the after-school care, but the hardest thing I would say around here is daycare or childcare, after-school care beyond the school time. So my heart goes out to these parents that have to do that. This is a hard place to live. It's a beautiful place that people want to live in. So it's a tough question. Thank you for answering that, asking that.
Thank you very much. After Joan is Ms. Morrison.
Hi, I'm Joan Liston, and I have a general question for all of you. What is the most important change you would like to see in our schools?
To begin this round is Ms. Alexander.
Thank you, Ms. Liston, for that question. We're doing a lot of things right, and we're moving in a great direction. That being said, what's the most important change that I'd like to see in our schools? So I'd like to see an expansion of the career and technical, technical education programs and an expansion of our partnerships with the College of the Albemarle and local businesses so that we have the opportunity for non-college-bound students to be able to stay and live and work here. You know, I want my children to be able to come back and, and work here if they go to college, and if they don't go to college, I want them to be able to have a career that's sustainable to be able to work here. That's something I hear quite a bit from our employers in the area is, is a real need, is they need qualified, you know, applicants who have a trade or a skill set, and I think that's something that can start in high school. A personal story is that that's something my brother did. The, the high school that we attended had a partnership with the local rescue squad. He was able to do an internship there, and he began his training there and later continued his career there. My brother's now a firefighter and paramedic in the same community that we graduated high school from. He did not have to leave the community to get and the rest of his education in his trade and was able to stay in the community and continue to contribute. So I, that, that's one of the biggest things I'd like to see is, is a continued expansion of that. I'd like to acknowledge that that's been moving in a fantastic direction, but we have a lot of great opportunities with COA and partnering with our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tauber.
I, I would really like to see a change in how we measure success in Dare County. There are a lot of factors that we look at, graduation rates being one of them. I'm not so keen on graduation rates, per se. They mean a lot, but I've, I've always imagined, when we hand a child a piece of paper that says they're a Dare County school graduate, what's it mean? What have we given that child? What skill sets have we given that child to be successful in life? Sometimes we fall short of it because we're looking at only the children that are going to college, and that's not what everybody's going to do. And, and that, to me, is, is if we're measuring success by the number of people we send to college, I think that's leaving out a lot of children. A couple of years ago, I wrote an article that was published in one of the papers. It was an Earn While You Learn subject, and that was to provide internships and apprenticeships for children in our school system, that they would go to school half a day, they would get the credits that they needed to graduate from high school on time, but they would also be learning a trade. And our trades, our businesses down here are clamoring for young talent to come into their businesses, and they can make very good money doing those things, plumbing, HVAC, electrical. And one of the things that I've, I've worked with is partnering with COA to provide those, if, if we can't provide those classes in our own schools, to work with COA to provide that. I've worked with Camden County, Currituck County, and also Dare County to kind of consolidate our, our potential here to bring vocational training to those three counties. One of the things that I've talked to with our CTE person is send home a laminated piece of paper and tell them what these trades make, electrical, and so that a parent could sit down with their child at the kitchen table and say, "Doesn't seem that you've done well in school," or "That's your interest, but if you, you know, worked in the trade, HVAC, what they pay, and plumbing, and so on and so forth." And one thing that we've forgotten here is, and I've said this before, the strength of our, our country is the middle class, and what we've left out is the middle class being blue collar.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lawler.
The change I'd like to see is educating the whole child. The Board goes to Greensboro every year for a convention, and last, last year when we went, this was an underlying current or a theme that I really appreciated. Today, our kids come to school, and they come from very different challenging backgrounds or home situations, and they're not ready to really open their ears up and learn till they feel that they're warm and secure where they are. So there's been a new push to look at the whole student when they come in the classroom, and our teachers do a great job of that. Some might have an insecure home because of food, or living, or split home, and there's, there's a whole movement to work with that. Our superintendent did a visioning thing with all the parents, the teachers, and students. He asked every teacher, "What, what are your concerns? What's going on?" And they documented everything, and the underlying current that came up was help with mental health with children. So this goes to that situation as well. And we, we do a great job here. We hired two social workers last year, so that's been a big help to the teachers, to help them learn what keys they can do and what they can do. And we're going to have some teacher learning, where someone's going to come in to help the teachers learn how to help them, how to help these students, because it's just something new that's grown a lot recently. So that's, thank you.
Mr. Hester.
A lot of good points have been made, and I'd like to echo some of them with the trades. I think that there's a lot of great opportunities for locals to be able to stay in the community and not over, not only have a good skill set, but that also may encourage them that once they start doing some of these different tasks, they realize that this is something that they like, then maybe they can go to college, that they want to get more on the technical side of running the business. But it allows local kids to be able to use their creative spirit to be able to do something that they enjoy, and when they enjoy it, it'll be less like work. And there's a lot of different things that need to be done right here on the island without having other people to come in. Another thing I'd like to say, my granddaughter just started school, and I'm already hearing about bullying, bullying. So I'm concerned that we are in tune with what's happening in the classrooms and allow kids to be more comfortable with speaking up and doing the right thing because it's right to report things, and, and have kids to be strong enough to stand up for one and another. right to report things and, and have kids to be strong enough to stand up for one another. So, um, those are two things.
Well, thank you very much. And following this question, there's Louis Toth.
Would you support an initiative by the Board of Education to request the county commissioners to propose a bond for housing for teachers and others?
Third round begins with Mr. Tauber.
I am, as I had indicated before, I'm a member of the Deer Education Foundation, and currently, we provide housing for teachers here at First Flight School District and Naxa District, and we also have housing down at Hatteras for also, um, teachers. We've discovered that we are, or we seem to be meeting the needs of the teachers at this particular time in, as far as housing is concerned. We just looked at a piece of property in Mantio for potential more housing for stu-, uh, for teachers, excuse me, and would be working with the Board of Commissioners to purchase that and then to, and then to, you know, put it into, allow teachers to live there at, at a reduced rate. I think we currently charge about $900 a month, I think, for, um, teachers living in there, and that's pretty reasonable in Deer County. And, and so, um, we're continuing to look for housing for teachers because we want to recruit the best, and we want to make sure that if we're recruiting the best teachers, they can afford to live here.
Thank you, Mr. Hester.
Great question. On the surface, that answer would be yes, but a lot of times, the devil's in the details of things, and I think that, um, that would be one of the things that I had to do some more research on and find out why it hasn't improved even more. What I just heard today, this, you know, some of the stuff that's already taken place, but there's always room for improvement. So like anything else, you have to find out more as to what is happening, what needs to make it more official to, to allow these things to, to move on and go from there.
Thank you, Ms. Lawler.
I would want a survey done to see if there is a need. Right now, we have 24 apartments at Ron Hill Ridge, which is right behind the First Flight campus, and 12 in Hatteras. If there is a need, then that would be something we could look at. Land is, is just disappearing, so it would need to be a big piece of property, so I understand your question, because there, I mean, maybe the county would want to do this for their people as well. The property that we have is almost, well, will be paid off in 10 years. So right now, we have quite a bit of housing for the teachers, so a survey could give us a good answer for your question.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
So I will echo what my fellow candidates have said. I think we need more information. Do we need, you know, what, what is the need? What is the level of the need? Where is the level of the need? You know, I have many friends who are educators and have families, and an apartment is not always the best solution when you have a family of more than one child, for example. So it would be nice if we could take a look at what would be some of the other options in terms of outside of just apartments, but, you know, that, that's my thinking on it. I, I'd like to hear more from our educators, you know, what's the need? Where's it at? And in, in terms of a bond, you know, I think that would kind of come back to what would be the information, tell me, needed to, to be requested of the Board of Commissioners because, you know, our Board of Commissioners have clearly shown that they are extremely supportive of public education here in Deer County. In fact, some research I did recently indicated that we have the second highest supplement, local supplement, in North Carolina. So I, I believe our Board of Commissioners are, would definitely be on board with anything that would be helpful to our educators, but I think we need more information to make that determination.
All right, thank you very much. Judy Lotus will be on this.
Yeah, I was asked to ask my question again. What can be done in the schools? Oh, I'm sorry. What can be done in the schools to keep guns away from the schools, to make the schools safer, and also to keep the guns out of the students' cars? How can we change their attitude towards guns and just make it safer?
Fourth round starts with Ms. Lawler.
Guns are not allowed in students' cars. Guns are not allowed on school property. I am part of a group, it's the School Safety Team, and the co-leaders of that from the school system have talked with all the principals to get their input. We meet with, we have met with the commissioners, the sheriff, and we're all trying to work together on a quick response if anything ever happened. As you go around the county, notice our schools have had S-, well, we call them SROs, the police there, for over 15 years, and their cars are prominently parked in front of every school, which I think is a great deterrent. When the kids are not in school on weekends and maybe in the evenings, each police department goes in and, and does drills in our schools, do drills in our schools. So they are very familiar with everything in all the schools, so if they're called to it for an emergency, say, First Flight Middle School, they've been there, they know it, they know where everything is. So that has been going on for a long time. We have talked about possibly doing metal detectors, but if we did something like that, school would have to start a half an hour early because parents like to walk their kids into school, you can only go in one at a time. Our kids are pretty good. They understand what, what they can and cannot do. We don't have, thank heavens, a lot of violence or any violence in our schools, but it can happen. But I would just say our SROs are our first line of defense, and they do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
I won't repeat what Ms. Lawler already spoke to in terms of what we're already doing to keep guns out of schools. I have met with our sheriff. We are, I believe that we are on the same page in terms of school safety, and I think one of the most significant pieces to consider when we're looking at school safety has to do with the proper allocation of resources, in particular, mental health. It's an important aspect of school safety. I think we should be on par with the pertinent professional associations' recommendations in terms of ratios. For example, the American School Counselors Association recommends that we have one school counselor for every 250 students. The National Association of Social Workers, of which I am a member, recommends one school social worker for every 250 students. So we're moving in a great direction with that in Deer County schools. The National Association of School Psychologists recommends one school psychologist for every 500 students. So taking a look at where we're on par and where we can make improvements is one way to address or improve school safety. And, you know, circling back to something Margaret had spoke to earlier, you know, I really understand as a mental health counselor, the impact of adverse childhood experiences on student performance academically as well as behaviorally, and when we're thinking about school safety, we do have to think about children in a more comprehensive way. We need to look at the whole child. You know, what are the biological aspects, the health needs of that child, the social and emotional needs of that child, and of course, the academic needs, and how that influences school safety. I'm really excited about the program Nancy Griffin is implementing through the Children and Youth Partnership. There was a grant that they received for the North Carolina, for the North Carolina Resilience and Learning Project in our schools that will provide intensive training and coaching throughout the year for our educators with the goal of increasing academic performance, but also social, social and emotional well-being.
Thank you. Mr. Hester?
From what I've seen since I've moved back and now my granddaughter's starting in school, I noticed the presence of the resource officers, and not only the presence of them outside, but the friendliness that the kids display towards the kids. I think that connection that the kids feel safe around the resource officer. I also believe that the Sheriff's Department is doing a great job at having plans in place in case something terrible happens because I'm from the generation when we did bring guns to school. So I think a lot of it has to do with some mental health issues, and for us to be in tune with what's going on in the classroom, what's going on with the kids, and that whole, that whole kid again, because a lot of times when those things happens, it'd be, because it's a, an out reflection of something that's going on that they can't express. So the more that we are able to communicate with the kids and be open with the kids and have the kids to be willing to tell us when something's going on, and there's a lot of people that are very, uh, very alert on social media, to be looking for little code signs that are going on, and to be more proactive about trying to stop something before it gets out of control.
Thank you, Mr. Tauber.
Yes, I thi-, I think the importance of that question is to create an environment where children and staff feel that when they walk into our school property, that it's a safe haven for them. And what we've done, working with EMS, with the Sheriff's Department, with the staff, is to put in place contingency plans should a threat happen. And, and that threat can come from social media, and, and I think we're on top of that in terms of reading some of the social media and see what's out there and taking quick action to avert any kind of potential threat to the school system. As indicated before, I believe one of the primary things that we offer is the deterrence. We have an SRO vehicle outside the school. Any would-be threat to the school sees that parked there, doesn't know exactly where that SRO person might be at any given time, and would be taking a, a risk in terms of coming into the school. I will say that the other day, I was in one of our schools, and I noticed that the front door security system had to be open manually, which meant that the staff had to come from behind the desk and open the door, and to me, that was an unacceptable situation. So I called the facilities person, I said, we, we've got to correct this immediately, and, and somebody came out and corrected it immediately, but I just thought, we're imposing things on the staff, and we should make the doors operational or work, you know, as they should be. As I said, the, all threats must be taken seriously. I mean, today's climate, we've seen situations where maybe things kind of fell by the wayside and, and, and some really disasters have occurred, and as long as I'm on the school board, I'm gonna work really hard to make sure that those threats don't exist outside the school and inside the school. Thank you for your question.
Thank you. Breehan Bailey will be after this.
Hi, I'm Judy Lotus, and hopefully, you all have already answered this with your safe school and, and gun-free schools and so forth, but would you ever allow teachers to carry guns?
Well, round five goes to Mr. Hester.
Well, that's a hot one. Thinking about that question, I think I may be inclined to consider that from the standpoint that we have law-abiding citizens that have received training, if they have a military background. It, it had to, there had to be a lot of things in place to consider that, but I think we have enough level-headed people within our midst to be able to help. That shouldn't be the first line. The first line should be our resource officers, and that's their only mission, because it's not the teacher's responsibility to have to carry that burden, but at the same time, these teachers love these kids. They would do anything for these kids. And sometimes, that's another resource that could be available, but I don't believe it should be the first thing, but I think it's something we should keep on the table to have more conversation about it, because I think it could be an option if, if the situation was set up correctly. Not the first option, but I think that could have some more conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Tauber.
That is a question that I've struggled with as well. I've served 21 years in the military. I was always expert-qualified on weapon. I'm not quite sure, though, we're at that place in time where we need to have armed people other than the, the SRO in the school system. That can change, and, but I'm not foreseeing it at this particular time, and I'm not hearing it from my constituents that they favor something like that as well. And until such a time comes that my constituents offer that advice, I'm gonna go with what we currently have with the SRO and also the contingency plans we have should a threat occur in a school.
Ms. Alexander?
The question was, do you support teachers with guns in school? No. No. Absolutely not. I've met with our sheriff, we're on the same page about this. I've talked to a lot of educators, we're on the same page about this. I worry about the liability issues. Teachers are human, too. I don't want to put a teacher in a position of shooting a student. That's not their responsibility. We're already saddling our teachers with far too much for far too little than to ask them to come to school, prepare to shoot a student that they work with every day. I trust our SROs, I trust our law enforcement who are working with our schools to keep our schools safe. The drill protocols, the social sentinel, the being buzzed in into the buildings, I mean, we have so many protocols in place. So the answer is absolutely not. The sheriff is the person, I, I think, is, is a key person to ask. He says absolutely not. I agree with the sheriff.
Ms. Lawler?
No. When we had our school safety team meeting, I'll echo what Jen said, Doug Dowdy said, I don't want to see any teachers with guns. I have lots of friends who are teachers, and they do not want any part of having a gun in school. One thing I would like to say is that there is only one entrance to every school that is open during the day. You're monitored, you're looked at, you're buzzed in, you have to take sunglasses off, hoodies off, you have to go straight to the office. So that's another deterrent that we have, but I just can't imagine asking a teacher to have a gun. Again, what Jen said, they have enough going on just to teach their kids, and it would be out of the question, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the following question will be Charlie, Charlotte Pettigo?
Good afternoon. My name is Breehan Bailey. I'm the mother of three in Manio. I have one at Manio High School, one at Manio Middle School, and my youngest is currently homeschooled. My question is, money is no longer an issue. What are the top three issues in our school you would like to address after you are elected?
Round six goes to Ms. Alexander, top three.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bailey, for that question. The top three concerns or issues, I think, I, I'd like to work on, on the, once on the Board of Education. One is going back to the school safety issue. We're doing a great job, I think, in trying to keep our schools safe, but the mental health piece, we still have, we still have room to grow, and I think that's a significant one. I won't reiterate all of the ratios and whatnot, but I think that we need to get up to those numbers. We need to be on par with the recommendations of the professional associations that are experts on that particular topic. The second would be an expansion of the career and technical education programs. Like I said, I've seen it firsthand in my own family. My brother's had a career just as long as I have, except for I had six years of college and three years of supervise, supervision to get licensed before I even could get out and work, whereas my brother, he's been working since he was 16 years old in the same field that he's in now. Those are probably the top two priorities. The third, I think, it kind of goes back somewhat back to school safety, and that has to do with the bullying issue. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna stand before you, or sit rather, and tell you that I have the answer to that, but I do think I'm uniquely qualified to speak to what may be some strategies or policies that could be helpful in considering when we're creating school policy around discipline, around bullying, because I've worked with children and families in our community for 15 years, and many that I worked with were dealing with bullying issues. Thankfully, I had some really good experiences and I had some not-so-good experiences trying to collaborate with school officials. to collaborate with school officials, trying to address a bullying issue. But I think bullying is a significant problem. That does, again, I'll circle back to school safety. I think that does play a role and is a significant aspect to consider. Thank you.
Mr. Tauber.
Yes, I'm also going to say, mental health is a priority here. I represented 1,500 children in Baltimore City who were living in poverty, living with issues related to parents being out of the house, parents being in jail. It's the worst of the worst situation. And when I go into the schools every week, you have to look into the child's eyes and try to see what the child lives through every day and experience with that child experiences and see if you can't help that child. And sometimes I call it distracting them, taking them away from this place that they come from, this evil place that they may come from, and putting them in a place that they enjoy doing, like artwork and writing and things of that nature, sports. So I think we've got a long way to go in terms of how we handle each individual child. I think a teacher has an incredible amount of responsibility placed on them to try to decipher what child they're going to see today, whether there's going to be the happy child or the angry child. And quite frankly, I've gone in there and have removed the child just to get him into a different, happy mode as opposed to the mode that he's in. The other thing is vocational training. I'm a big stickler, like, we've got to have every child educated in Deer County, not just the ones that are going to college. And we also have to have challenging academic things, like for drones. What's currently marketable skills do our children need to find a good job? I worked with bringing a JRTC program down to Deer County, and I will work hard to bring more programs to Deer County.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lawler?
I would say CTE and VOTEC. I'm on the Food for Thought Board. I don't know if you know what Food for Thought is. We pack food every weekend for kids that might not have food. And through that relationship in Manio, the Alternative Kids, which is now called the Deer Learning Center, come over and help us pack every week. And it's just been wonderful. I see these kids all the time and I think that if they, now that they're at COA, they will have an opportunity to perhaps learn a skill and feel good about themselves and be good citizens. Not that they aren't, but it's very wonderful. They come in, and we have a lot of people that are retired, and they all talk to each other and ask them how their week was, and it's been a very wonderful relationship. So they're very near and dear to my heart. Another problem or another challenge is social media. It changes rapidly every day, something new, and trying to get into the brain of a high school child or a teenager to say, "What you put out there will be out there forever." And what you put out there, you can't say, "Oh, I didn't mean it." We have to take things very seriously. Our superintendent, we have hired a group that they look at the different words that are going through social media, and it will kick out strong words that could indicate something, and nothing has ever shown up yet. But it's something that has gotten some kids in trouble, even though the schools try to warn them, "Don't do this, don't do that." They still go ahead and make a mistake, and there are repercussions that they have to suffer from. And another thing I would just like to say is that the communication that we have started last year has been amazing, and that's something I would like to see continue and strengthen. Our superintendent went to every school twice, once in the morning, once in the afternoon, talked to teachers, talked to the students, wanted everybody's input, and is very vocal about when schools are going to be canceled, he'll let you know right away. And I just think that the communication and being an ongoing thing with the community is very important.
Thank you, Mr. Hester.
Those are all good points, and I would agree with most of those. One, I think that school safety is important. Because if a kid doesn't feel safe in the school, it's going to be hard for them to learn. So I think that's vital. I also think that we need to do something with mental health to be able to see potential problems and things like that coming, to be able to help those kids that are in need, and to be able to help people to identify what some of the warning signs and things like that are. Not only identify, but able to have mechanism in place to be able to help those individuals. And I also think that VOTEC is really good because it allows people to grow and learn and to actually, to be successful and see the fruits of their labor and to realize that they can continue to work in this great area and to be proud of it and to be able to give back. And those would be those three things.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Pettigo. We're new to the area, so I have some basic questions. How do teacher salaries and per pupil expenditures compare with the rest of the state of North Carolina compared to Deer County? And why is that? Thank you.
Let's see, round seven starts with Mr. Tauber.
I think people move into this county because of the school system and because of the education that our children are getting. It's even gotten better in the last couple of years. Like I said, we've hired a new superintendent. He's got a vision. He's hired people that also have that vision. We seem to be entering the 21st century. In conjunction with that, we have this relationship with the Board of Commissioners to support the school system. And as mentioned earlier, we have now a five-on-five, which I was a big advocate for because we put our five people up there, the Board of Commissioners puts their five people up there, and they're talking the same language. We're not speaking different languages. We're saying what we want, and they're saying, "Okay, if you want this, substantiate it and justify it." And that's the accountability that we have to go through to the taxpayers of Deer County, is if we're going to ask for something, we need to justify and substantiate it. And I think the Board of Commissioners that we currently have on hand want our children to succeed just as much as anybody else in this room. And with that in mind, given the parameters that I just mentioned, if we can justify and substantiate it, they'll back it. And so then you have the whole community working together as a team to ensure that when your child leaves the Deer County school system, they're going to have received a very good education. So we do a very good job in terms of the dollars that we get from both the state and the Board of Commissioners to educate our children in the myriad of ways that we do now.
Thank you. Ms. Alexander?
Teacher salary per pupil spending comparing between North Carolina and Deer County? North Carolina is 39th in per pupil spending. But Deer County, we are extremely lucky, and a big piece of that is the fantastic relationship we have with the Deer County Board of Commissioners, which the local supplement is second in North Carolina. So that makes up for the significant deficits coming down from the state in regards to funding. In regards to teacher salary, we got a lot, we got a lot to do better. Again, that's coming down from the state, though, because again, when it comes back to the local portion of funding for our schools, we're knocking it out of the park. The Board of Commissioners has a fantastic relationship with our current board. I have a fantastic relationship with our current Board of Commissioners despite not being on the Board of Education just yet, and I plan to continue to nurture that. So I think when we're looking at it, you know, Deer County, we're doing pretty good with per pupil spending and with teacher salaries, but a big piece of that is the local contribution. I think we've got a real opportunity to improve that, though, in terms of teacher salary coming down from the state. You know, I've been to Raleigh quite a few times to advocate on behalf of a variety of issues related to education and plan to continue to do that if you are willing to elect me to the Board of Education because the state needs to kick in a heck of a lot more to make these teacher salaries where they ought to be. We need to be at least at the national average, and we're not.
Thank you, Mr. Hester.
That's a topic that I'll have to do some more research on. I do know that that is an issue for the state or for Deer County because we have a lot of teachers here that are having a hard time. They're putting in their own money and stuff to help out in the classroom. But I also know there's a lot of different local community outreaches that are helping the teachers to help offset some things. I do know that with like-minded people charging towards one specific goal, we will be more successful. So for me, I'd have to spend some more time trying to find out where the disconnect is and continue to work with exceptional people that are trying to achieve the same goal. Because I do know that people from Deer County are very compassionate and they care a lot about the kids. So I know that we can figure out some ways to close the gap.
Thank you. Ms. Lawler?
We are second in the state per pupil funding by our commissioners. They are very generous to us. I sit on the five-on-five board, and we've been going about three years, and it took us a while to all figure out what we considered capital improvement, what they considered something else. So we have aligned our budget with what we call, with them as well. And it has gone so smoothly, and we now just get together once in a while just to make sure everything's going well. They're extremely supportive of us. Salaries are set by the state, so when you hear that teachers are getting a 30% or 25% increase, that really doesn't mean every teacher. If you've been teaching 20 years or more, and I have friends that have been, they said they got maybe $50 more a month. They are trying, they are working with the teachers that have been there for 10 years because they want to get that salary up to a certain amount, but that's not every teacher. So just to let you know, don't think every teacher's getting this huge salary. And the county has been very generous with us in helping us with extra teachers. When the Department of Public Instruction gives us teachers, they look at a square city block and they go, "Okay, you have this many people, you only need this many teachers for elementary, middle, and high." The county funds us because we are so uniquely divided geographically, we need extra teachers, and they fund us all the extra teachers that we need for Manio and the other schools. So I can't say enough good about our commissioners. They are our best friends. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one last question. We're running out of time, but just one. I see a lot of you are trying to write, and if you're like me, should we need some more lights on? The holiday is nice, but could someone put some of the lights up so we can read this? To Eda.
Hello, I'm Teura Towler. I have two children in Deer County School, one in elementary in Agghead and one in First Flight Middle School. Recently, I put my youngest child in Agghead After School Enrichment Program. We had an issue with unhealthy snacks. I usually provide my kid with a healthy snack because the school always provides Pop-Tarts, Rice Krispies, and treats that are not healthy. Is the budget under the Deer County? And how can we, is that limited to the budget and what can we do better about it?
Round eight goes to Ms. Lawler.
We just met with a woman that does the after-school care, and she said sometimes the kids don't like the snacks. And to answer your question honestly, I really don't know. I think they are probably provided with a budget and that they buy the foods. So it would be good if you were to speak to her. I'm sure she would correct that because they have a lot of kids at all the schools, and they do want to provide healthy snacks. The schools as a whole in the cafeteria have done away with all the sugared foods. They don't fry anything, so I'm surprised that they would be offering that at after school. But she's, I don't know if you know Marsha, she's a great woman, and I'm sure she would be very receptive to your question.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
It's a great question. Both my children have attended the After School Enrichment Program, one currently because the other's a middle school now. They're huge fans of the snacks. I'm not. Some are, you know, there's a really interesting variety. Sometimes I'll ask them and they've had a piece of fruit or a fruit cup or, you know, something that maybe is okay, but then other times it's something that I would prefer them not to have that's not really feeding their brains and isn't the greatest choice. So I definitely would like to see that improved in terms of the frequency of the unhealthy snacks. It does generally come down to a budget issue. This is something I've actually been in contact with the school about. There is a budgeting issue and there's, you know, pre-ordering at certain amounts, and so there's some planning that would have to take place in order for that to change, but I have absolutely no problem advocating for that because I'm on the same page.
Thank you very much. And next we'll go to Mr. Hester.
I also see the advantage of healthy snacks and stuff for the kids, and I suspect that it is a budgetary issue that's set. But I also think that sometimes things don't get corrected until they're brought to the attention of people. So that's one of the things that I look forward to, is to hear the different things that are happening out in the community that's not going just so, so that I can get their side of the story, be able to present it to others, so we can find out a way we can work together to make it a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Tauber?
I'll repeat what Margaret said. We did meet with the director of the After School Enrichment Program. We talked about the diets and the food that was offered to children in that after-school program. I believe that in talking to Marsha, she would be flexible and adaptable to whatever the parents came in. I know they're very aware of some of the allergies that children have in the program already. They've discussed that, and I think they give the parents quite a latitude in terms of what the parents can give to their child, knowing their child better maybe than the people that actually work in the programs. And so if your child has specific needs, I think the best thing to do is address those specific needs with the directors there. The one thing I say is if you don't get satisfaction, call me up, you know? And so I'm a person that says, if you can't solve the problem, then come to me and, you know, we'll try to solve the problem. But I know there is that temptation, maybe on the cost, to give the sugar products, but unfortunately, when the child is released from the after-school program, they go back to the parents and the kid's flying high off the sugar. And so that's a concern of parents, and that should be, you know, the program director should be made aware of those situations and be able to solve the problem.
Thank you very much. Good questions, good answers. Now I'm going to see if I can try to get the closing statements right. Okay, so we do this in reverse order, and so we have closing statements beginning with Mr. Hester.
Well, I'd like to thank you all again for coming today and spending this time. It's helped to make me even more aware of the immense responsibility that lies ahead. I look forward to the opportunity to learning more, to understanding more, listening, and helping to get the unheard voices heard. I believe that we should always leave the place a little better. I'm looking, I'm leaning on my ability going into this not having any agendas, but just truly going in to want to help, to ask the why question. Sometimes we spend a lot of time doing the same things because that's just the way we do it. I'm a firm believer that if we can't explain the why, we probably shouldn't be doing it. Sometimes we don't like the answers that come from that, but that's another reason I like about the truth, it kind of stays right where it is. So I'm looking forward to having good, open communication and be able to make a difference, to make it better because at the end of the day, the kids are, it's our future, and the better that we can prepare them, the better off that we're going to be. And I look forward to the opportunity, and I look forward to your help and your support and help me to be a better person, to help Deer County to be better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lawler?
Thank you all for coming today and for all your interest that you have in schools and your great questions. Having been here 31 years, I've seen such a huge change and growth in our schools. They are, like I said, one of the best in the state, and I look forward to the next four years. I know we're just going to continue to grow. forward to the next four years. I know we're just going to continue to grow. And I am here. I want to hear any ideas that you have. I want, I want to have any questions, I want to hear your questions or any thoughts. So, please call me anytime and let me know what your thoughts are. And again, I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tauber?
Yes, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. And it brings us together with the citizens of Deer County to pose their questions to us to get answers. As I said, I look in the crowd and I see the potential from the community members in the crowd as to where we can go with our school system. And I'm very excited about, we're, you know, serving on the board. It's an honor to serve on the board. And as I had mentioned earlier, I wake up every day in terms of what I contribute, what can I contribute to make this a better school system. And if we all think like that, I think we can all make sure that when those children cross that stage with a Deer County high school diploma, that we're setting them up for success in life. And that is really what this school system's all about, setting up our children for success in life. Whatever their passions are, we give them the tools to find that success in life. And that should be the plan every day, and to evaluate what we're doing right and what we're not doing so well, and to improve on those things that we're not doing so well. But as it stands, we're doing well now, but we can always get better. And I think that with the community's help, we can make this the best school system in the state of North Carolina and maybe the best in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Alexander?
Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. It's been really helpful to be able to hear more from people about some of the things that are on their minds. I kept a tally during the Board of Commissioners portion, and I'm really thrilled to say that we had a comparable number of questions from the audience as the Board of Commissioners. So, I'm really excited that people are really interested and care about our education here in Deer County. You know, I listen for a living, and that's what I'll do for Deer County. I've spent my entire career devoted to children and families, and I want to bring that expertise and skill set to the Board of Education. I like this quote that a friend told me about, and so, I'll share it with you, from the founder of LEGO. "Only the best is good enough." And I think that applies to our schools. We are, we have a fantastic system here in Deer County. I am so grateful that my children get to be Deer County Schools students. It's one of the main reasons that we moved here before we even had children. But only the best is good enough. I think we can continue to move in the direction that we're going, and I think I'll bring a unique perspective to help make that happen. So, thanks again for making the time today to ask your questions. And my cards are out in the front. And email address, phone number, call me. Tell me what you're thinking. And I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, we didn't get to two questions in this segment, but obviously, all these people say that it's okay to call them and ask them. And I'll be here for a little bit, so I hope those two questioners get to do that. But if you need to watch this again or re-listen to it or tell a friend about it, we are going to rebroadcast this on Education TV, Channel 198, on Saturday, November 20th, from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then Thursday, no, excuse me, October 20th, Thursday, October 25th, from 1:00 and 7:00. These schedules are out on the table, so you can pick them up if you didn't write that down. So, this concludes our forum for the Deer County Board of Education. Candidates, thank you all for coming, and thank you candidates for being here. I just had to say, this puts me in mind of one thing I have to say. There was a statue once, and these people are so dedicated to the education of young people. It was the best statue I've ever seen. It was a young person, and the sculptor had sculpted all the way down to just below the knees. And in the hand of this young person was a chisel and a hammer, because that was, he was prepared to do the rest himself. And I think that's what we're doing here. Thank you very much.